Maddie. Hi, welcome everybody. Regular city council meeting, we're very glad to see you here this evening. We have several presentations from community members that we are looking forward to this evening. With that, please remember rules of decorum are in effect. Meeting called to order. Five thirty P M. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. City Secretary, we have a quorum this evening. Councilmember Martinez is absent due to family business. Proof of notice of meeting, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Notice of this meeting was posted by two P M on November fifteenth.
Great, thank you. City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to public hearings. If anyone is here to speak on one of the public hearings, you will have three minutes. You'll come up to the podium, state your name and your ward. You'll have three minutes to speak. Council cannot respond for you during that time. Public hearing A to obtain citizen views and comments regarding the first and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven dash O two. And ordinance canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the November fifth, twenty twenty four special election held for the purpose of amending the Alpine City Charter, providing for the following findings of fact, repealer, severability, effective date, and proper notice of meeting. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Seeing none, public hearing B regarding the first and final readings of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven dash O three and ordinance amending the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, providing repealing and severability clauses, a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing an effective date. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this? Okay, seeing none, City Secretary, we close public hearings at five thirty three P M. There are no presentations and recognitions, no proclamations, community interest items. Each member will have one minute to speak. Mayor announcement. Alpine Historic Association is looking for volunteers for the Christmas Stroll and Home Tour Docents for the Historic Home Heritage Tour. Wassel Crawl is on December fifth, which is a Thursday. December sixth, Big Ben Coral Music Performance at seven P M and December seventh is the Christmas Stroll. Starting at seven P M, it'll start at the churches and move towards the courthouse. City Manager, any announcements?
Uh, just a few. Um, following up, we had a successful hiring event. We welcomed eight new team members to the city of Alpine. And we were pleasantly surprised at those who attended. Art Walk is this weekend. Um, I'm encouraging everyone to meet at the visitor center at five thirty P M on Friday. They will be having a grand open opening on the newly established photo gallery at the visitor center. This includes photos from our photo contest for the past fourteen years. So lots of photographs to look at. There'll be light refreshments. We're really encouraging everyone to attend to kick off the art walk weekend. City offices will be closed next week from Wednesday, November twentieth through Friday, November twenty ninth. An observation of the Thanksgiving holiday. As the mayor mentioned, we do have the historic Alpine Christmas Stroll coming up on December seventh. On December thirteenth through the fifteenth, we have the Country Mountain Christmas here at the Civic Center. It's a opportunity to get your last minute Christmas shopping done if needed. Um, on the twenty first of December, we are hosting, um, with the help of Heather Gady at our visitor center, the Hometown Christmas Parade. We're really excited. If you need more information, please visit the city website or visit Alpine T X dot com. And we encourage anyone who'd like to have a lighted float to to find up in the tent.
Great. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of items. One attended Commissioner's Court last Tuesday. Uh, uh, some, a couple of items of note, and I think it pertains a little bit to Alpine as we look to the future. The Commissioner's Court is looking at putting a EMS bunkhouse down in the South County. And they're also looking at potentially putting a visitor center in in South County. So, uh, they've got a number of discussions going on there. Uh, relative to Art Walk, I've gotten a number of calls about, hey, we've got some holes in the sidewalk uh, out in front of the Ivy property. So tomorrow, I'll be putting down some plywood there, so we don't end up with any trouble over that. So we got that covered for Art Walk.
You don't need to do that.
You don't? I don't? All right, who's gonna do it?
Um, so the street department is finalizing the last road they need to pave or so coat. And then they're gonna move over to maintain all of that, filling it in with dirt, leveling it out, tree lights, everything matters.
Super, thank you very much, Megan. I'm glad I raised it. Good. I have nothing else.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Nance?
Just, uh, one community item. We had a CAD meeting today and, uh, large thing has occurred where the CAD did not have freeze values for over sixty five and disability from, I think, the twenty twenty three year. So people that would have been receiving that exemption from the ISDs, it will affect the funding for the ISDs. Um, so some of those people may be receiving a re- refunds from that year. Does not affect the city because we do not give exemptions for over sixty five or disability. And there will be, uh, an article in the paper with more information on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stone?
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanna obviously art walks this week, but there's lots of neat events supporting our nonprofits like Big Ben Pets has an event and Alpine Public Library. I know those as well. So make sure you get out and support our local community, uh, in that way. Also want to honor that this is the last day of Transgender Awareness Week. And it's a great opportunity for LGBTQ plus community to celebrate uplift and and, uh, you know, go against, challenge the anti-trans legislation and that negative rhetoric. And of course, we want to be a, uh, collective power and to advance equality and justice. And we had a great, well-attended first annual pride pool party this past summer. Looking forward to do that again. Also, we have many proud businesses here and an ally in Word One, so wanna lift up our community. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on to changes to posted agenda. Is, are there any items to be continued or withdrawn? Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda for some separate discussion? Councilmember Stevens?
Seven A, please.
Seven A.
It's a simple vote.
Okay. Any others? Okay. All right, are there any I, action items to be added to the consent agenda?
So I'm pushing the envelope here because in my view, there are some things we've all talked about before. I have to move nine A, eleven C, and eleven B into the consent agenda.
A, C.
So nine A, eleven C, eleven D.
Okay, and, uh, that's the motion. I would need a second to that motion. No second. Okay, I need a majority vote in favor.
Is there a discussion on that or no?
No, is the motion a second and a majority vote? Bye.
May.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, City Secretary, items A, C, and D will be moved into the consent agenda.
Yeah, that was nine A.
Nine A, nine C.
And eleven D.
Oh, eleven C.
Commentary inquiry, can there be a lay on a, uh, consent agenda addition? Yes. And then can he withdraw that if he wanted to? Just wondering.
So it's just basically adding the items to the consent agenda, so they're not approved yet. We'll get to the consent agenda and then all of the items, so.
If it didn't approve, then we'd have to go back one by one.
Yeah. Okay. So City Secretary, Councilmember Stone, Escobedo, and Stevens voted to move items nine A, eleven C, and eleven D to the consent agenda. Right? Okay. All right, so that has been moved to the consent agenda. Are there any time-sensitive items?
I'd like to change the order of the executive session. Uh, we, uh, to, um, move the consultational attorney with regard to property up first and move the personnel matter of second.
Okay, and that's by simple request, so we will move an executive session consultation with the attorney will be first, that's item fourteen B. And fourteen A personnel matters will be considered second. All right. Thank you. All right, consent agenda, I need a motion, or City Secretary, please read.
Quickly, the time-sensitive items section is next. Is that where you wanted that considered, Councilmember?
No, it's not under executive session. I just want to change the order.
I see, yeah. All right, perfect. Okay, so.
Okay, City Secretary, consent agenda.
Okay, tonight's consent agenda, uh, contains two items plus the three added. It'd be approval of the November fifth, twenty twenty four regular meeting minute. Approved payment of October twenty twenty four monthly billing summary of work is welcome services. October twenty twenty four Office of the City Secretary Board, including legislative services, city council activities board, and commission activities, public information and departmental statistics and updates. Approved the first and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven dash zero three. An ordinance amending the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five budget, providing repealing and severability clauses, a Texan open, uh, Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing an effective date. And finally, approve the fiscal year twenty twenty five and fiscal year twenty twenty six Far West Texas Water Planning Group Administrative Cost Agreement with the Rio Grande Council of Governments.
I need a motion.
To move.
Need a second.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
City Secretary, the consent agenda passed unanimously with all council members voting in favor. Okay, items removed from the consent agenda would be seven A, Councilmember Stevens.
So, uh, finally, uh, item on seven A is, uh, that was the workshop. Uh, and I did show up late and I just wanted to reflect that because on other minutes we had people show up late and it was your point, and that was the other thing.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, um, we need to vote, City Secretary?
You need a motion and a second.
Okay, so that was the motion.
So that was the motion, yep.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, let's vote.
All right. Hi.
Bye.
Bye.
Uh, City Secretary, consent agenda A has been approved unanimously to reflect that Councilmember Stevens was in attendance and would be in my mind. Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on to reports and presentation. City Secretary, each presenter will have six minutes, up to six minutes on the clock once they come up and introduce themselves. Okay, item B belongs to the City Manager.
Mayor, um, Chief James Edgerton has experienced a family emergency and is not in the Alpine area. So he asked, um, if it was possible to not have his presentation, I agreed with it and act that he just attended the one in January.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to reports and presentations, item C, City Manager.
This is an update from the Family Crisis Center of the Big Ben area. I'm not, oh. We have, no, I wasn't sure who was coming, for sure. Me, Naomi.
Hi.
Hello, everybody, how you all doing?
Good, great, thank you.
Well, I'm Naomi Hernandez. I am, uh, advocate, I'm the sexual assault advocate and community educator. Y'all have the slides or? Yes, okay. Let me tell you a little bit about us. The Family Crisis Center in Big Ben provides long-term and emergencies, emergency services to survivors of domestic violence, sexual sexual assault, dating violence, and the violent crime. We serve five rural counties, which is Rooster, Presidio, Jeff Davis, Terrell, and Pecos with a staff of ten since Gina Wilcox retired this year. All of our services are free and confidential. Our team got bigger, as y'all know, let the subcontract the tracks, which is, is doing wonderful. Hopefully, well, she's trying to make, have drivers interlingua. Um, we have one driver here in Alpine, we just want to have so have the drivers, because it's hard, especially interlingua. That's why we're really pushing, because it's so out there and there's so many people. It's, it's a tough area over there.
So, so how does, if I make, you want questions now or until the end?
Yes, sir.
So how does someone get ahold of Traxx?
Oh, Traxx, um, they call the, the track company, which is here on the, the last page, the Marfa office.
Okay.
There's a number here, which, um, is the main office, is all there, Marfa, it's, um, area code four three two seven two nine nineteen ninety two. And you set up an appointment, they say at least three or a week, you go ahead and set up an appointment.
Thank you.
And I also want to point out for anybody listening on YouTube later or online that you, these slides are in the city council packet and they will be online.
Um, our services from January twenty four to October twenty four, the percent, the family crisis big man was able to make a positive impact on the community of Alpine. Most notable and number of clients serve outreach, emergency shelter, and financial assistance. The four advocates of the Alpine Office were able to provide nine thousand nine hundred and sixty four services to one hundred and thirty eight clients from January twenty four to October twenty four. Of those one hundred and thirty eight clients, there were one hundred and sixteen females, twenty-two males, and one nonconfirming gender. Other services, we have, uh, our new legal aid advocates are Regina Sandoval and Deborah Galado, Gerardo. She's from Turinwa. They will start assisting clients with legal, legal aid intakes from trauma, assisting for protective orders, family law issues such as divorce, child support, et cetera. When they, when they complete their training in November, it was supposed to be in November, but Virginia Sandoval, she had a family emergency, her father passed away, so they probably gonna start in January with their training if everything falls through. And then, um, our, um, the FCC volunteered to provide over eight thousand hours of service to assist the mission of, of CTVB. And that continues of when they distribute food on whom we have been, support groups. Um, deja vu is a, is a number of volunteers or somebody who wants to come by and assist cleaning the offices and stuff like that as well. And here's a couple of pictures of us doing our outreach. I was over there, the first top one, I was at Marfa, there was their first fall and health fair, it was so fun. And then the bottom one, that's when we were at the Saw Ross where it was the movie that we were presenting for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, which is the month of October. And we're gonna reschedule a new one. Um, it's, it's, the movie is called So Why, So Why Stay, it was when one of the local graduates from Saw Ross. And then this one was at the courthouse, the, uh, breast cancer. It was Virginia, me and Miss Tona. In our outreach, we have, we had participate over eighty outreach or training events, including Saw Ross Schools and surrounding communities, outreach and office hours in service, teacher in service, and more. Like on Wednesdays every week, either Regina or I go to the college at the Lawrence Hall, we're there from nine to eleven, room three oh four. What I do, I stand the hallway and I'll go just talk to everybody, so they know we're here for you. You're not alone, we're here, and we talk to everybody. And then also, we go to Fort Davis, we're at the library, we go twice a month as well, which I love the drive and I love the library. Um, I'm a nerd like that. And we, the Family Crisis Center in Big Ben has two emergency shelters. There's one here in Alpine and one in Presidio. During, during January twenty four to October twenty four, we shared to the victims of domestic violence and or sexual assault, we provided emergency shelter for the total of eighty-three nights. Financial assistance during January twenty twenty four to October twenty twenty four, Alpine clients received over fifty-seven thousand dollars in financial assistance in the form of rent and deposit utilities, transportation, childcare, relocation, needs, food baskets, and gift cards. As you all aware, we have a little, little free little pantry right there in the front of the building. We provide for local Alpine community, um, clients, the people walking by during the summer of twenty three, we did see an increase of clients and community member, and among those were elderly adults. Yes, and so I'm the one who's in charge of ordering that, so I see what they grab and I make sure I have plenty of that. Like, I noticed they liked more applesauce, they like beans, pinto beans, they're not too much of the navy beans, but and I ask them, what would you like? And soups, they love soups, oatmeal. We make sure we fill that up for them. And also, anybody can come in and get a food basket. You don't have to be a client. And we also provide toiletries when we have it. And then, uh, we also have the deja vu, we provide a deja vu vouchers. We do that as well, and they can go get clothes, house roll items, we do that as well. And then, as you are aware, we have a new building. Um, so far, what they're telling us, we're supposed to be moving in in spring twenty five, so we're predicting between spring, summer, twenty twenty five. Is this gonna be wonderful, is the layout, is gonna be a better opportunity for us to serve our community better? And having, we're gonna have, have y'all drove by? The place, see the pro, it's gonna, it's gonna be nice, we're all waiting. Because in our office, it's, I don't know if y'all been in there, it's like a ba, it's like a maze. And there's a couple of pictures of the process of the, of the building. And then, and this, our contact, you can contact us, where there's a, there's the advocate on call twenty-four seven. Um, we're open Monday to Friday from A M to five. We have a website, you can call us, email us, we're there. And then also the last page for transportation as well.
Good, thank you. Thank you. Naomi, are there any questions, comments from the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up, you mentioned about providing childcare. Are you utilizing the Alpine Independent School District or do you have other resources?
We, we provide childcare, like if they need assistance in paying for it. We, and then I know through, um, the workforce, there's something called a Y. Um, I know Virginia Sandoval, she used to work for workforce, we'll help them with that as well, but like, we'll help them pay for child, childcare if they need.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
One quick question, or rather, if you'll just walk us through, if someone needed your services, what would they do? And of course, remind us that it's anonymous and everything like that.
Um, if they, um, they can come to our office, they can do an intake. Or if they can make it to office, if we can make it to them, we can make it to them, or if they want to do it over the phone.
Okay. And if it was an emergency, would they call nine one one?
No.
And then, or how would that work?
Usually, if they, if they call, if we have a hotline number, um, they usually, they will call whoever's on call. And then we can attend it, if it's during the day, they'll give us a call and we go assist it. Usually, the Alpine PDs feel good at letting us know if they need our assistance.
And there's some, a working relationship.
Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you so much for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a wonderful evening and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
If I could add, we have a great working relationship with Crisis Center. We are the only police department in Texas that answered the call after hours for a crisis.
Great.
And it's, it has nothing to do with police department members, it depends over, you know, or if that's.
Fantastic.
Excellent, so the only police department in the state of Texas that works with the crisis. Perfect. Thank you, Darryl. All right, moving on to discussion item D, City Manager.
The next update is from the Alpine Public Library, and we have Executive Director Don Wood now here.
Hi, Don.
Hello. And you have slides for this too, right?
Yes, we do. And remember, they're in the city council member packets, so they'll be available to anybody online.
So my update today, I'm gonna cover the expansion, I'm gonna talk about, uh, our, the, uh, Big Ben Regional Resource Directory, adult education and programs we're having for children and adults. Um, the first slide, the first picture is, uh, after eight years of planning, we finally, about a year ago, uh, got ready to break ground and start preparing the site for construction. Uh, and that's been just over a year ago, and we're done now. So the next slide shows our beautiful firewall. And I'm showing you the firewall because that allowed us to overcome an obstacle and allow the project to receive pretty much as normal. And also, it's a great soundproofing.
Yeah.
Okay, people come in there and they look through the window at the kids' area and they say, it's like watching TV with the sound off. The next picture there is the exterior of the completed project. We still have some things to do, some minor things to deal with. We've made some new spaces and we've made changes to the existing library space. I think probably our biggest issues have been with library shelving. Uh, we had a whole bunch of shelving that was defective from the factory. When the people brought it in to install it, they couldn't use it, so it all had to be loaded up and hauled away and reordered. And considering there is like a two to three-month wait to get stuff, well, we got it within a month, I was pretty happy about that. I want to let you know that we are planning an open house for Wednesday, December eleventh from four to six P M at the library. Everyone is welcome to come over and check out the new spaces. The next slide shows a screenshot of the Big Ben Regional Resource Directory. That's, uh, uh, the website showing Alpine. Uh, we started the directory a year ago with a grant from the Big Ben Regional Hospital District. The idea, and the, the next slide, the idea came from a community P, uh, meeting where people voice their difficulties in finding information about health resources in the area.
Great slide.
The purpose of the directory is to provide a resource where people can get started finding what they need. The web address is bigbendhelp dot O R G. We currently have fifty-five organizations listed, covering a hundred and twenty-one programs and fifteen hotlines. Uh, the website is in English, English and Spanish. Uh, the last few months, we've registered up to six hundred and seventy hits per month on there. And about a hundred and sixty or so of those people were using Spanish. The San Antonio Community Resource Directory is the group that hosts our website. Uh, and they have been adding new locations around the state. You can now do a zip code, uh, search for different areas of the state and see what kind of, uh, help you can get there. Uh, keeping current with the site is very important. We regularly update and add or remove information as necessary. And we're always welcome, uh, to have people make suggestions about different resources that we should add. Uh, now I wanted to talk about the adult education. Recent statistics show that about twenty percent of the adult population in the U S is illiterate. And about fifty-four percent of the adults have a literacy level below grade six. So I'm really happy that we can get some Texas Workforce Commission in here, uh, money in here to do some adult education at the library. Uh, right now, we have seven GED students. This group is our third group since we started the class. And we are part of the Far West Adult Education Consortium. And starting July this year, we're working with the Socorro Independent School District, they're administering the funds from the Texas Workforce Commission. So far this year, we've administered forty-nine tests in our test center. In addition to GED, we've had real estate, insurance, TSA. And then back today, we had one of our GED students pass the second of her four tests. So we're happy about that. Other adult education includes citizenship. So far this year, three people have been naturalized. There are ten more in the system. We have fifteen ESL students, they speak Thai, Spanish, Taiwanese Mandarin, and they're learning English either in person or by Zoom. We have somebody in Florida that's zooming in, so. Uh, the next thing is, I guess, adult programs through the Texas Rural Communities Grant. We've had over three hundred people in classes at the library from, uh, yoga, gem painting, CPR, first aid, uh, and legal documents. And we're gonna keep doing some first aid here pretty soon. Uh, then attendance for kids programs, last summer, the reading program increased by about twelve percent over the year before. Toddler time is going strong. Uh, we occasionally are offering programs at the Saturday Farmer's Market. There's a kids class for tinker cat and three D printing on Mondays from four to seven. And our plan for the new teen area is to increase teen activities and get them in the library. And that's what I wanted to tell you today. Thank you for support of the library. And remember, you're invited to stop by the open house on the eleventh.
What time? Stay.
Uh, four to six on the eleven.
Stay there for just a moment. Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Escobedo? I know, I think y'all are doing a wonderful job. Councilmember Nance?
I have one question about E-rate, because I'm sure you guys do E-rate.
Yes, sir.
Uh, are you on the same cycle as the school? Uh, like this would be your five of five for us in the school, and y'all would be starting a new E-rate cycle next year?
We, we, our cycle starts on the first of July. Uh, yeah. So this is the period of time when we're starting to put out bids for the, uh, next year.
And I was, I saw the text that y'all were doing, I was wondering if some of that, like, uh, updating your, uh, your bandwidth over there.
We are, yes.
Oh, yeah.
And apparently, I, I'm not sure how it's gonna work, but we've been having, uh, running out hotspots. And that has not been, that was covered by the ECF. Then it was dropped, and now I guess they're covering it again. The, uh, the E-rate is covering it again, so we're gonna try to get some of that. We had twenty of them, I dropped it down to ten because I didn't have the money to cover all them, and we kept people constantly unhappy because they're on a long list. Hopefully, that will take, we'll be able to remedy that soon. Thank you.
Councilmember Stone?
Thank you for.
Okay, I noticed that you, you do the Family Science Night.
Yes.
As an old science teacher, I'm really proud of that. And then, uh, Curse of Writing, I think that's great.
We've done that.
It's been removed from the curriculum of most schools, and that's wonderful.
The, the, uh, Family Science Nights are really popular. What we'll be doing, we have, we've kind of cut back a little bit with all the construction and things going on. What we'll be doing, we have, we've kind of cut back a little bit with all the construction and things going on. We'll get started again, but I think the parents learn as much as the kids do.
Absolutely.
And it's nice that they're learning together.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And moving on to discussion item E, city manager.
The next item is an update from Emergent Air and we have Walter Kirk.
Mayor Council. My name is, if everybody doesn't know me, my name is Walter Kirk, the COO at Emergent Air. Uh, we operate both ground and air here in Alpine. So you guys have the report. Yeah, so you guys will see some of the numbers. Of jump there in about the March-April area of the on-scene times. That, that's from dispatched on scene. It was a little delayed whenever I looked into that. Uh, the problem was we had a couple of new employees that. Were including transfers. We do a lot of transfers specifically from the hospital to the airport. And they'll call us to say the airplane will land in an hour and a half. And so that's what skewed that. I think we've now fixed that problem. Uh, they were, they were putting it in as an emergency call. And, and so they, they get that call and they said, okay, great. And then they don't got, get on scene for an hour and a half. So it doubled the, the, the response. But that's not an accurate response timing. I think I've got that fixed now. Uh, I didn't pull it back and change the numbers because I wanted you to know that. There were some, some numbers in there that were off. With that being said, um, you guys will also have noticed a Mercedes Sprinter. Uh, that's been driving around town, if you noticed. So that's the newer one that they have right now. Uh, we, we, we have ordered a brand new ambulance over here. That will be in, in um, January. We just took receipt of the cot. So that will have the power load system. So they'll no longer have to lift the bed and put it up in the back. Everything, it'll be a touch. So it's a lot safer for everybody involved. Um, for larger people that, whatever, like myself, it, it, it's a, it's a challenge. The, the cots themselves weigh about a hundred and seventy-five pounds. Or the power cot, which is a hydraulic driven cot that can weigh up to, or lift up to seven hundred pounds. Uh, this is a system that actually takes that, you put it in, hit a button, it lifts up the wheels and rolls it inside. The way it used to be is you'd put it on the end. Hold it, lift the wheels and with the patient and the, of course, one end is in the back of the end and they're pushing in. Um, that's a challenge and that's something that, that we have up, upgraded our ambulances to, or in the process of trying to get them all like that. It's very expensive. It's about sixty grand for that, et cetera. So it's a little hard to do every ambulance at once. But we are taking those steps, at least with the new ones that are coming out. We, we add that. That's an addition onto, on top of an ambulance. Uh, we, we stumbled across this ambulance, honestly. Right now, buying new ambulances is about a year and a half on. You order it now, you get a year and a half. Yeah, so that's how, that they backed up a bad during COVID, um, and they haven't caught it. They don't have the chassis for it. And so whenever you go to order an ambulance, it's a year and a half to two years.
I was just gonna ask some shocking ambulances. Are you still leasing the ones from West Texas Ambulance?
We purchased.
You purchased them? So you still have them?
We said, they're not here anymore, but we have those. We, we bought everything from. From them, a, all their stuff, that was a done deal that, that day, whenever we took delivery of them. We made an offer and paid for all their cardiac monitor. A lot of the stuff was too old to use. The ambulances are really the main thing that we kept and soft goods. Other than that, the monitors and stuff were mobile monitors. We have them. I'm going to send them out to be biometriced. I'm going to donate them to uh, like fire departments and stuff that we work with.
So the ambulances that are in town that are not yours, those you did not purchase? Or did you buy everything, block stock and brown? Because there's some sitting over off of.
Yeah, tho- those, those were not in service. We bought their in-service ones with the.
You bought the in-service, got it.
Yellow ones. There were three of them.
Yeah.
And, and they were twenty fifteen international.
Okay.
But with low miles, for big diesels like that.
Yeah.
Should last four, five hundred thousand miles.
Yep.
They were at about a hundred thousand.
So it's the red ones you didn't buy?
The red ones we did not. They were beyond, that's why they're still there.
Yeah.
We, we looked and we're like, well, we could, we could fix some stuff. Some stuff is out of our realm of being able to fix. Uh, one of the big challenges that's happening here is that the diesel place up on the hill closed down. And so I don't have anybody here. One of the commission members gave me somebody to call uh, to work on my diesel ambulances. So that involves, we had a mechanic for a short time. You have to know the challenge to get a good diesel mechanic that can work on ambulances. We went with these guys who work on your fire trucks here. And it was like crickets. We called you and then, so when are you going to be able to go and, I'll call you right back. So, so that's been a challenge. We have two ambulances. Uh, parked in our hangar, the airport, that are, um, I, I just need somebody to work on these.
Okay.
I haven't.
Anybody have a question?
Question?
Yeah, um, I wanted to see, if, you know, you were speaking on about on scene. Are these statistics, are they uh? All of Brewster County or just Alpine?
They're all of Brewster County. Unfortunately, I can't separate it out because there's no different uh, zip codes.
Sure. Yeah, no, that makes sense.
But, but the majority of the calls are here in the city?
Yes.
Um, yeah, very few are in the county.
And so are, are these EMS workers, are they onsite when they're leaving or they're coming to?
They, they're not. So, so unfortunately with the number of calls per day.
Yeah.
And the amount of subsidy and so on and so forth, to provide onsite people i- is, is a different price.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we wind up, a- and again, um, is it cost effective? Yes. Uh, one of the things we did, and even if I could give you the old ones, older ones, we had a little faster response time, but we used to run code three to everything. We have stopped that uh, nationwide. Everybody's moving away. The code three is with lights and sirens. We've moved away from that. At least in the EMS business, um, unless it's uncontrolled bleeding, stroke, possible stroke or possible heart attack. Uh, they're not really time sensitive things. And again, it's not, and, and. Both, multiple studies have shown, you don't save that much more time by the amount. You increase your chances of getting an accident by about fifty percent. Whenever you turn on the lights and sirens.
Yeah.
People are looking for the lights and sirens. They're moving lanes and generally it's into the lane right in front of you. So, so that's, we, and that was with agreement with the. The uh, group that hired us from here in Alpine, a- and, and that's being stepped up across the state. That's a, that's a statewide thing, but, but we did it first. Before it became statewide, yeah.
That makes sense. Uh, yeah, if somebody's having chest pain, that would be a different code than.
Sure. A- a- and again, um.
Yeah.
That's within an hour, generally, there's certain treatments they can do.
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, they can start them here at this hospital and then we fly them somewhere else.
That makes sense.
So, so running code three somewhere doesn't save the amount of time or even transporting them back. To the hospital, code three, if it saves you a minute, the amount of anxiety that increases. So you get more scared because they're hard on the brakes, they're going around, turns fast. The lights and sirens just make people nervous whenever they're facing backwards. They've got an IG that they didn't have an hour ago. So stuff like that, it, it does impact the patient. And for the amount of time saved, it's not worth it. Plus the increase in danger to the public and to the providers and to the patient.
Sure. I appreciate y'all using data to find the, the right way to do that. Last question is, I know, I noticed that there's uh, no payer mix on the statistics. Do you have any kind of general trends or anything that you see from that?
So, uh, so that was something that Greg added. So it really wasn't part of our contract and I'll do it once a year. So at the beginning of the year, for the, this past year, I will give you guys a good payer mix.
Okay.
Um, in general, we have seen an uptick in WellMed, um, which is a type of, of, uh, of. Um, Medicaid.
Okay.
And so we have seen an uptick in that here. Um, there's a big, big group of Blue Cross Blue Shield i- in Brewster County.
Yeah, that's the ACA, I'm guessing.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, okay.
And so, so that, but it began at the, at the January meeting, whenever I come in to do the last quarter and the yearly, that, that I'll include in there. That was something that Greg added extra that, that I provided last year.
Need to see trends.
And that's Judge Hennington.
Yeah.
So we have the interlocal with the city and the county.
Yeah.
And we both provide a subsidy for them to serve, North Brewster County.
Sure. Thank you, Michael.
Councilmember Nance.
The only thing I have, it was a que- it was more of a comment for the public, you know, it looks like you guys get utilized about two point five to three point five times per day.
Yes, that's, that's correct. Pretty, pretty consistently. Uh, again, that's averaged out. We'll have two days where we don't turn a wheel and then one day we'll run five. I, I think our record here is six, six trips in a day. That, and that's nine-one-one. Again, I separated it out. We'll do six flights in a day where the ambulance will move patients to the airport. Excuse me, from the hospital. That happens more frequently. But as far as nine-one-one calls, I think our record is six and I was on the ambulance Saturday, so.
Councilmember Escovedo?
No, I just, um, gave Rick uh, the diesel mechanic.
We just sent you two diesel mechanic names.
Yeah, because that, that's been a challenge here. And even when those guys were here, I, 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 I liked them, but when they shut down, somebody's like, no, they're closed. I'm like, they have an ambulance. They have an ambulance up there, so I have to go up there and get it before they close.
Councilmember Stevens?
I have nothing else.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you guys. That's all, we're going to be leaving. We have an airplane waiting.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. All right, moving on to information and discussion items. Item A, city manager.
I'm the mayor and council. A while back, you had requested that the Office of the City Secretary kind of do a rundown of all the current ordinances. And provide kind of a when it was updated, if it had ever been updated. Um. Our city secretary, Gio Calderon, asked his receptionist to sit with this project and she had prepared what is included in the packets. Um, for council to review. You'll notice that it starts off with the course chapter one and breaks down all of our current ordinances. And provides the revised date status and notes. Um, we do have several that are in the nineteen seventies. Um, I do want to point out, um, that a year ago, um, we had this discussion about updating ordinances. And the process we wanted to take. Um, we were all sort of focused on some of the bigger ones at that time, including STRs. We were also looking at the rules and the form for city council. And we just implemented some internal procedures with ordinance processes to ensure that there is enough time to actually review them. Have the legal island over them. I also prepared a memo and sent out to council some of the ones that could be easily updated. Um, some of the items such as like retirement, um, the Office of the City Secretary does not manage the retirement and hasn't been doing that since my tenure with the city. So some of them are fairly easy that we could start working on and moving forward fairly fast. Um, you'll notice that there's been big pushes with ordinances um, in the past three years. Um, when Gio and myself came into these positions, we kind of hit the ground running trying to update things we knew were of concern. Um, and things that we were just missing. Um, some of the ones that I'm not worried about are, for example, our purchasing. Because that's aligned with the city of Texas. So unless the city of Texas makes some big changes, we're compliant. But you'll notice that there is a very wide scope of information within our ordinances and it addresses everything from, like I said, the rules of the form of the council. To our purchasing, to our, our public safety, to our transportation, to our utilities, to our sanitation, to our short-term rentals. To our occupancy taxes, um, property taxes briefly mentioned, um, or animal control. Um, there's just a lot of information. I don't expect to have an in-depth conversation tonight, but I wanted to get it before the council. So that you do see that we are working on this. And I do have an internal list I'd like to provide as one of the priorities for council to consider. Um, already working on multiple um, updates to ordinances. And that are, like I said, very easy. We can process and get them through fairly fast. Um, I do also want to point out that one of the largest ones that we are currently working on, that you received a new updated draft is the zoning ordinance. I also want you to consider that if the city does move in the direction of a comprehensive plan. You're definitely going to want to know how the public wants to utilize the land in order to make decisions with zoning. I think it's going to be a great, great discussion on December third. We do have a workshop scheduled. Our planning and zoning has already reviewed it. Building Services has provided their suggestions. I'm also going to put a side note that we are now in the eighty-nines legislative section. Um, and there are already fifteen legislative bills uh, being proposed that will change our ability to zone. So things we all have to take into consideration. Um, the other one that has been in my back pocket and Gio gets on me on a regular basis is the utility one. Um, it is also one that I would like to have completed this year. And the biggest section that I've included, um, utilizing other cities for reference, um, especially will help the public. Is a whole customer service, customer responsibility section that provides the guidance in the ordinance itself. It also allows for the city manager and the director of finance to have the ability to make decisions. For a, an resident who may have an unforeseen water leak at their water bill is, you know, a couple of thousand dollars. And how do we work back with them and how can we help give them some credit? Putting some procedures and processes in that as well. As well as the responsibility of the customer when it comes to ensuring that, you know. They, they don't mess with the city meter or they put a cop out on their side. Um, and then process they can walk through if they have questions. So I think that those are really important to include and we tried to do it once before. And unfortunately, just didn't get the momentum to go through. Um, and we've already worked with multiple directors of utilities and the gas department director and they're happy with their workings. So the big push now is to ensure we get that customer service side um, within the ordinance itself. Animal advisory has, has theirs up to date. You have a great board that works on those regularly. Um, we just recently updated our building and standards commission and some of our building regulations. Um, we were very fortunate to have Andrew Devaney with us for a short period of time, who actually, one of his first things was to hit the ground, getting these updated. To ensure we reflected at least the current codes and regulations. Um, but we're not done. There's always room for improvement. And you do have your outdoor lighting, um, that was recently uh, put in. Um, which is coming up on its five-year, which means those who are non-compliant can and will be cited. Um, of course, we will work with the public. I don't want people to think we're going to come at them with axes. We're not. We will work with them. But we have been sending out yearly notices to both residential and commercial to remind them that they do have to be dark sky compliant. Um, one of the things that we've talked about here recently, um, especially at the last meeting, and I know Councilor Stone had brought it up. Um, updating our assigned ordinance, um, removing the things that are no longer required or allowed. Um, Gio was asked to start working towards that. He provided some insight on that, so we're going to be forward with that. And we would like to look at our alcohol ordinances, get a little better insight on how we want to move forward with that. Um, the Parks Board just recently completed another review of the Parks ordinance. They will be providing a draft to council after they make their final suggestions, um, probably early um, January, maybe late January.
Said all of their ordinances or just you were on alcohol and then went to that?
So it includes in there. That's why I, I jumped there because I was one of the big topics of discussion. Um, it's a portion of the ordinance. Um, but they've already put it on their next agenda to start looking at other sections, um, specifically the pool. Those ordinances are from the nineteen seventies. And of course, it's making sure we stay within the state compliance, excuse me, as well. Um. We have other ones, you know, we talked about fire prevention. We have the fire marshal. Um, a lot of health and safety codes are in here. Ensuring that, you know, when you stay compliant and we do meet with the state requirements as well because we do have to follow those as, as outlined. Um, some of the other ones, traffic and vehicles in general, there's a couple ones coming out right now regarding the speed limit. Council had had that discussion about changing the speed limit to twenty-five across the city. Um, momentum and then it kind of felt of the back burner. Um, I think the state heard you because the state has now stepped in and there is a bill being proposed. That statewide, it would reduce that to twenty-five.
Oh.
So another one that's on my radar because.
Hello, state.
Someone's listening. And the other thing that they are looking at on the state for traffic that will help with some of the decisions we do make with our traffic control. Is removing the requirement that the police department has to do a traffic study. These are alternative bills being proposed, but currently any changes you do within the speed limits does require a traffic study. Um, this means that Darryl and his team do have to be out there kind of keeping track of that traffic. He has found equipment to assist with that because long term it will be beneficial to the city, especially when we look at our mobility projects and our non-mobility projects. Um, like I said, the utility is the biggest one, which is the last one, which is chapter ninety-eight. I've provided decent insight. Um, and then of course the zoning, utilities and zonings are going to be your, I, I like to say your, your biggest controversies. Um, because they will have the biggest impact on residents. So as we move forward with these discussions, I, I'm encouraging, I know the Building Services Department has been encouraging people to attend these meetings. Also included in the packet is an internal spreadsheet that was developed, um, to keep track of all of our ordinances. Several years ago, the idea was that the, the ordinances had to be sponsored by a city council member. Um, which did kind of slow down the process. Um, that has been removed as part of discussions. And now you'll see what's being proposed, if it's passed, if it's failed, when it went to the readings and stuff like that. So you get an idea of all of our ordinances. Um, roughly from about two thousand sixteen, seventeen, um, Gio's office has included all of them as far back as they're able to find. Um, the detailed information, of course, is going to be in the newer ordinances that have passed and failed. So you'll be able to get an overview of that as well. So one of the discussions coming up and moving forward is, um, the priorities that council would like to see on which ordinances to be approved. In the background, I'm working on the simple ones, the ones where. In the background, I'm working on the simple ones, the ones where we're just changing a title or a position within the ordinance. And but I do know that we have some big work to tackle that will take more time and that maybe should be an item of discussion every agenda moving forward. This also works back with your boards and commissions. We've provided them tasks. This is to ensure that they stay on those tasks, but what they're researching and what they're thinking are in line with the Council as well. I'd hate for them to spend hours of time putting in information discussion and Council comes back, well, this isn't what we thought would happen or this wasn't our thought process. And which is why we're having that workshop on December third. So really important. So this is really just to kind of give you a toes-in-the-sand feel on all of our ordinances. And please take some time to review. And I will provide that memo again to Council with some of the ones I'd like to see move forward. And then hopefully, within the next couple of months, we'll start seeing the utilities. I've already started working on the hotel occupancy tax collection one to allow for penalty and allow for better
Great, thank you. Quite a few here. This is really thick. Some of the ordinances back to nineteen twenty-nine. So that's interesting to look at and to see. I'm glad that you're having the boards and commissions. Look at this as well as the, you're also having your directors. Look at what fits the, is this a lot of ordinances here? Nineteen seventy-eight seems to be a very popular year for the ordinances. I went through and highlighted all of the seventy-eights and my highlighter ran dry.
Seventy-eight must have been a really busy year for the state.
I think.
Because in reviewing other cities, I've noticed that we all have the same format and the same time period for the seventies.
There was a constitutional, a new constitution in Texas, I think in nineteen seventy-six or something like that happened.
Something, something obviously happened, but there's some, it's very interesting and, and once again, the Councilmember's packet is on the city website. So you can go back and look at some of these from nineteen twenty-nine. I think that's the oldest that I've found. Well, no, there's a nineteen twenty-eight. But anyway, okay, so Councilmember Stone.
Awesome. Yeah, there's a lot. You're exactly right. I was gonna mark the, the same thing with nineteen seventy-eight was when smoking in city buildings was enacted. And so a lot of our things are going back to, to that day. But appreciate that you're talking about signs. Thank you, Gio, for looking into that. And also, two points that I just noticed that might, or rather, three, I guess, is I know in right-of-ways and pedestrians are on here, I didn't notice bicycles. And so noticing that that might be something that we can add in, noting that we're making our first city bike lane. I think it's good to be able to have a right-of-way on there, especially when talking about liability of, you know, when you get hit. Typically, a bicyclist doesn't get it, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're protecting those that are not in a five-thousand-pound vehicle. And then truck routes are something also that probably down the road we'll want to look into as this railroad is not gonna be built anytime soon. And we have lots of traffic coming through town. And so just noticing that that's something that's probably on the, you know, two-to-three-year scale of, of that increasing, especially with natural gas coming from northern Mexico. The last thing is, I was just interested, I saw consumer protection. It obviously comes from nineteen seventy-eight. To your knowledge, have we had an office in any time of your, your period, a, a City Manager? I didn't think so. And most of that is in the Attorney General's office.
Correct. And we've never had a city engineer.
Yeah.
So like I said, some of those are gonna be real easy. We're just gonna switch out what the name is and put it to what we actually have.
Sure.
But no, in my tenure with the city, we've never had a consumer protection.
And I think
Nor had anyone even, it's one of those ordinances that's there, but nobody's even, hey, what is it for?
Yeah, and, and, and I, I don't mean to be calling out, but I'm, you know, any business here, everybody's gotta make their margin, but I'm sure there's something interesting to note that we do have often higher shipping, higher, higher costs for consumer goods. But I, I'm sure that that would be a popular issue to bring up to the public of noticing if there's any price gouging or anything like that going on. But I'm not sure if the city can do anything about that or if that would be, again, the AG's office, but
I think it's a great update to include that we refer them to the state within the ordinance so that if someone at two A ends up set, they have
They got a way to go, yeah. All about communication. Love it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
So thanks for doing all this. One heck of a lot of work to do. I know in my prior life, at a facility or organization, I had some seventy-five thousand rules and regulations. We rigged that a fifteen thousand a drill cost out as part of the discussion looking to say what ordinances we can just move away with.
Definitely. If there's one that we can repeal, then that's definitely a direction because that's an easy, easy action to do. And and there will be a cost to this. Every ordinance we update or if we repeal, we want to make sure that we're qualified so that they're not only available online, but we get that publication.
So you've got lots of work to do. Look forward to seeing your list. Thanks.
It's not short.
I mean, just the numbers, fifteen pages on the city person, there's like a thousand of them.
Councilmember Escovedo?
I'm speechless. There's a lot. But it's good that we have them to work on.
Good. Councilmember Nance?
Just the same thing, comprehensive plan and what the information and the feedback we get from the comprehensive plan, I think that's gonna be great to drive admitting some of these ordinances. And then, you know, what Reagan said, I think some of the most important ones are gonna be transportation zoning and we'll keep working on the parks.
All right, discussion information. Item B, City Manager.
So I just wanted, I mentioned at the end of last month, that we still grew expenses and revenue for roughly the next sixty to ninety days after the end of a fiscal year. So I just wanted to provide that September as of the end of October to show you that we actually have had some additional revenue come in and of course, our expenditures. The expenditures should slowly die down. We hope. Every now and then we have a vendor who for some reason decided not to submit an invoice and we get hit with that. And but just to give you some key observations when I'm looking at this one. And in looking at the revenue, we slightly increased twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars within the general fund and the expenses were roughly fifty-two thousand nine hundred and five. And the utility funds, we looked at bringing in another fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars and we expended another hundred and seventy-one thousand seven hundred and six. The utility one has the highest accruals out of all of our funds. And we have three particular vendors that usually I have to beg for invoices so that we can get them paid within a timely manner. Typically doesn't happen. And then we get hit October, November timeframe. The airport, he is just always hand-in-hand. We brought in an additional seventy-one thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars primarily from fuel sales. They got reported in October. And then, of course, his expenses was four hundred and fifty-four dollars. And hotel occupancy tax, you'll notice that the final quarter is collected in October for an additional hundred and eleven thousand seventy-three dollars and expenses related to ten thousand six hundred and ninety-two. And then with the gas department, they brought in an additional two thousand nine hundred and five dollars in revenue. And then their expenses was twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. So these are all the accruals. INS, there really is no change. We only pay out our debt payments twice a year, so the expenses should not fluctuate at all. And then the revenue, we typically don't see very much come in towards the end of the year anyway, because most people do pay that debt payment for the beginning of January. And so overall, you'll see that we really are staying within our bounds of the budget, a little bit higher on the percentage of total use. I do want to point out when you're looking at the water and wastewater disaffirming reminder, especially for the public, there's one point five million that is budgeted but was neither moved into revenue or expenditures, which is where you see that lighter percentage of use. Airport, he is always within his hundred percent. And he, he never goes under. And hotel occupancy, please note that there was also some reserve funds that were set aside specifically in this, which we did not utilize, which is why your numbers are lower. And gas, it, it's really, these warmer winters are kind of affecting our revenue. I mean, we're seeing that within the budget and then if you're interested in thinking, and we do tend to bring in a little bit more on the revenue side. Those are just for those who made past due payments. That is for September. I also included October within the report.
That's information item C, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. I don't see it in my pocket. Page one sixty-seven.
I had it. And so in October, I never worry about the first quarter when I think about our finances. None of our departments can spend fast enough, which is a blessing in disguise. And we also don't collect a lot of our revenue within the first quarter. And most of our revenue does come from sales tax and property tax. So you'll see most of that come in around the January, February timeframe when people are starting to, to pay back or to pay their taxes. The general fund, you'll see that we've brought in a hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-four and expended three hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and fifty. Part of that is because of the way our paving season is set up, part of the expenses is gonna be the last push of the paving season. Because they expend within this fiscal year, it cannot be accrued to the last fiscal year. And the utilities, they brought in four hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and expended a hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and thirty. On a side note, we do have that big project coming up that is already underway. We should start to see some of those payments and expenses come in on the utility or the wastewater treatment plant. Airport, he's brought in so far fifty thousand and expended about seventy-five thousand. And that's gonna be fuel costs. I ask that he always push the limit at the end of a fiscal year to purchase fuel the next fiscal year. And so the very first of the month in October, he's always purchasing probably two of his largest loads. And so it's mainly fuel cost. And hotel occupancy, once again, this is gonna be mostly your STRs, three thousand three hundred and twenty-three. And then we've expended sixty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-nine. The gas utility brought in eighty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine and expended a hundred and nine thousand two hundred and three. Interested in thinking, we brought in one thousand two hundred and ninety-four. And of course, we haven't had to submit any of our debt payments. So as mentioned, I'm not very worried about the, the first month of the year. And you will start to see some rather large expenses over the next couple of months as we look at making those precautions for the bigger items. And the loader, the backhoe. And we are working with outside vendors to ensure the procurement without having to possibly go out for the RFP. So you'll see those expenses start to come down.
Great. Councilmember Escovedo?
You did a great job. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, so I'd like to comment about the current fiscal year because we're too new to it and we're always off to start. But I would give a top-level summary for the last fiscal year as you probably would expect that I would. Budget was seventeen point two million dollars. We expended fourteen point eight million dollars, you know, for a two-point-four million dollar underrun on revenue. You'd say maybe that's bad. However, on the expense side, seventeen point two million dollars expenditure of thirteen point one-four million dollars under run of four million dollars. Back to the potter side, almost one point seven million dollars. So well done.
Great. Councilmember Nance?
No comments.
Councilmember Stone?
Remind me, uh, let you, remind me going to the, the water on the last fiscal year, what the one point six million dollars, what that might have been allocated for or just, you know, why it was
So and the reason why it's recorded on both sides is it's the American Rescue Plan funding that the city received, roughly one point five million dollars. So it's sitting in a reserve account. We budgeted as a revenue for when we move it to actually spend it. We did not get the RFP up and finalized until July, August of the end of the fiscal year. So this is for the clarifier one and the drying beds to be remodeled. So the money is in the budget, but it's actually sitting on the back burner in a reserve account until we utilize it specifically for that project. Council allocated it specifically for wastewater treatment improvement.
And that was, we have already allocated it, so we're safe. It's, we got them. Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Great. All right, so that takes care of information and discussion items. At this time, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. Six thirty-five P.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the first action item is to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one one dash zero one. An ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of the unimproved portions of Saltillo Avenue, Monterey Avenue, Tulucco Avenue, and Avenue C. All situated within blocks one through six, Coloma addition to the city of Alpine, Brewster County, Texas. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty. To the applicants, Michael and Lynn McCarson, directing that funds for the sale of the city's interest be deposited in the general fund for the purpose of street improvements. Providing for terms and conditions of such thereof, providing for a severability clause, providing for an effective date.
I need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one one dash zero one.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, city manager.
And a little background on this, the applicants originally filed to replat the property. And when that moved from Building Services to the City Secretary's office to start the scheduling. It was noted that within the replat that there were actual city unimproved streets. The application was not moved forward because the discussion began with, you know, there is city property, you would have to purchase it. They didn't, then moved forward with the application to purchase city owned property. They did provide an appraised value of thirty thousand dollars to close and or sell off those portions of property on this proper location. And the intent, we are not aware of. We know that the original replat was to divide it into different sections for possible development. But at this time, we don't know the long term intent and development of this property. And should not be a concern, but I did want you to have the full background since I know you would ask me, what are they going to do with it?
Great, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
So, I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions about it. One of my add is, what's the addition of the red section, section ten? Is that an addition to the ordinance? Because that's what shows up on my screen and I'm trying to understand, is that of significance or not?
That was actually added by the city attorney and it was just a small formatting issue they will fix and make that regular text for the next reading if approved.
So it has nothing to do with the intent or content of the ordinance?
No, it was just added by the city attorney for legality because she recommended adding that. And when we printed it, we accidentally added it with that. We didn't amend the text to be normal text.
Gotcha, okay.
We didn't change the color.
Okay, okay, with that now I want to, so keep on going with the questions, but I may come back and may ask for a couple of questions.
Councilmember Stone?
You know, I'm looking at this, to your knowledge, is this in the floodplain? Do we know that?
I do believe so, it's been part of some of the discussions.
Yeah.
This is also the property that at one time, for those of you who are familiar, that they thought about building the nursing home on as well.
Okay.
Not the current plan moving forward, just to give you some historical, this property has been vacant, they have recently gone out and leveled it. And it's on the west, north side or northwest side of town.
Sure, my only worry, I'm putting it out there and no further questions, but my only worry is, you know, paving this and increasing flooding around, you know, the developed zones that are there already, but I'll pass, thank you.
Councilmember Nance?
I guess I have a question for Ms. Trevino.
Cynthia, are you present?
Yes ma'am, struggling with the buttons, thank you, no worries.
My question was, when a city sells a large plot of land, like in, either as infill here or outside of a city. How, say that was going to be a subdivision in a different city. Does the owner typically work to put in streets? Because I'm sure once the city sells its property, then it is entirely upon the developer to choose how that property is driven. So the city, then are we entirely dependent on their vision for that property within zoning restrictions?
So the answer is yes, unless there was a separate form of development agreement negotiated that went along with the sale. But otherwise, once the sale conveys that property and the other property owner, you know, takes possession of it. It is there to do within, you know, the requirements of any city ordinances or county regulations.
Okay, so then, and this property is R two, I believe, on our end. So one, if we did sell this, then they would be able to choose where they want to put driveways in, if they want a street. That would also go as far as if there was an alleyway or anything needed?
Yes, sir, so whatever they did do with the property, you know, to the extent that they wanted to develop it, they develop it. Consistent with the city's requirements for streets, alleys, you know, curb cuts, roadway cuts, you know, all of that.
Okay, and items like this, is it typically, would you say more often than not, there is a developer agreement? Or is it typically just in smaller cities sold to the owner with the trust and the vision that they're in telling with the property?
So normally for smaller parcels like this, it is just sold to the property owner with the understanding that they'll, you know, comply just like any other property owner. Normally larger, larger sets of property or larger parcels normally go with a development agreement.
Okay, I think that's all my questions for now.
Councilmember Escovedo?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, anything else, Councilmember Stevens?
Thanks, Mayor, so given this plot of land, should we be asking for a proposed purpose and property agreement on this property? In terms of what it would look like for the future for the developers later?
I'm gonna refer back to you Cynthia on if we can request the intent and a possible development agreement.
So the answer is yes, you know, if the city, when it owns property and it conveys property, y'all are in the same position as any other property owner. So to the extent that perhaps, you know, there's a need to control that property. You know, given on where it's at, you can either do it via a development agreement. You can also put the same types of deed restrictions and those types of covenants on the property. Because again, you step into the shoes of any other, you know, as any other property owner. And to the extent that you can legally put on, you know, whatever covenant you're looking for, you could add those things as part of the conveyance. So, right, because y'all will have seen or may have heard of deeds to say, hey, we're going to sell you this property so long as you use it for X. And in the event you stop using it for X, you know, that property is going to automatically reconvey back to the city. Or, you know, whatever the city wants done with it. Usually those kind of controls are normally put on, again, you know, larger properties, things that are kind of in the center of town where somebody could really gunk up the works for, you know, saying, you know, redoing Main Street or something like that. Without a proper control on the property.
So in light of the information that's being provided, what are council's current, current concerns? So that if needed, we can follow up with the property owner to let them know that these are the current concerns. One, I have intent. What do they plan to do with the property owner, Councilor Stone, you mentioned flooding?
Yeah, no, I'll reposition that as West Sol Ross Avenue. I would guess that large amounts of non-permeable surfaces like concrete and stuff could create flooding along that area.
That was West Sol Ross?
Yes. It's right where the bridge is, right there, that already occasionally, like are recent downfall, I'm sure. At a foot of water sitting under that bridge.
Darren Hughes brought the initial question to what we are considering.
Yeah, on page two nineteen, I see the bold line is the property. So I'm assuming Olive Street is outside of this property and that's not included.
So yeah, the bold line is the property itself and anything within it is what's being requested, everything outside of inside.
Okay, the one thing that I have then, I'm glad to see Olive Street, we don't lose access, access to Olive Street. Because one thing I don't want to lose access to is the development opportunity behind this property. In case another purchaser wants to buy that and we put that on the tax file. So I definitely want access to those block six and block five additions behind this property. And then Avenue C, unimproved, that one. So if we have Olive Street coming in on that and that property does get developed in the future. I'm just a little reticent to give up Avenue C because that provides two entrances into this area as far as from a safety perspective or anything else. And just ingress, egress into that back area. So I have less of an issue with Saltillo, Monterey, and Tulucco, and Marillo's. But out of all those that I would prefer to keep, it would be Avenue C. That is also the only property that if you head out of it, there would be an actual intersection further west. The other ones kind of just would be in the middle of not making sense on that block.
Yeah.
Then the only other thing I had would be right dead center in that, in this property or this parcel is, I believe, electricity pole and stuff. So just to kind of see, make sure verified the city has no easements or utility right of way, anything like that, just so we do our due diligence before getting into any other situation on, kind of like what we've gone through. Make sure we're covered. So if this is a sale between the city and the other owner, we make sure that property law does due diligence to make sure everyone's above board.
Councilmember Escovedo? Councilmember Stevens?
So thank you, Mayor, so Megan, I might add also, the property at the corner of West Brown and Sixteenth is one the council spent time on. Where we had a sewer line running through there and we added that extra two feet and we had to grant a special easement. And so I don't know what the setback is from Brown. I would hate to see us go down a path and not understand what the implications are from a survey standpoint. Because when I was out there last, that property actually sticks out further. And I'm wondering if we surveyed Brown Street to make sure we really understand that or not. And what the potential, where the potential sewer line is. So it goes back to the easement requirements as well. My inclination is, hey, so much about the property, I get it. But like Councilmember Nance is talking about, trying, and frankly, I don't worry about it to the floodplain, that's their issue. They can bill as high as they want or whatever, but I do worry about city access, particularly to the land that's to the east there. And what the implications would be, because I have spent some time over there and it'd be nice to understand what their, what their game plan is.
What are they going to do?
Because my sense is, they're going to put a development in there. And if that's the plan, I'd say, great, we certainly can use the housing. But it would be nice to understand what those implications are, particularly given it's R two. And what would we zone that area which we're giving up and the value for that? And I'm surprised, those are only worth thirty thousand dollars.
Right, yeah.
That's, I was surprised because once it becomes contiguous, I would think there's a lot greater value to that. But standalone, just those alleyways, I get the thirty grand, but once you now make it a contiguous piece property. Well, I would think the value of that would be a whole lot different than what it shows right now on that. So it'd be nice to have a discussion with them. It really would, hey, what's your plan, what's your intent? Applaud what you're trying to do, help us understand so we can take into account and understand what the implications are for that area.
I agree.
And if it ties back to efforts of blame, what do we really want there?
Mayor, may I make a, just a, just a note about the actual property, hey, if it floods, it floods. I was making a note that West Sol Ross Avenue is very low there. And if that is completely concreted down, hey, I'd love to have twenty more apartments there. But at the same time, if it's completely concreted down, that is going to, it's going to flood every time we rain. So I just wanted to make that clear. But what are y'all feeling? Should we allow a first reading or ask them to come or can we pause it or?
Wait, okay, city manager?
Council does not mind admitting the motion. I would like to be able to follow back up with the McCarsons and provide some of the feedback and concerns and ask that they attend the next city council meeting to be able to have the discussion. Directly with council instead of us making assumptions.
Yes, please.
Reasonable.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens, can you make a motion?
So I move that we postpone the second item until the next proper city council meeting.
I need a second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's vote on postponing it to the next. The city secretary, the amendment to postpone until the next city council meeting has passed unanimously by council, now this.
So the language appropriate, that gives flexibility, doesn't have to be the next one.
Okay. And now we need to dispose of the original motion as amended to postpone. And now we need to dispose of the original motion as amended to postpone. Okay, and the original motion had been amended to postpone, passed unanimously by council. Great, thank you. All right, moving on to action item B, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Item B is approved. The first and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven dash zero two in ordinance canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the November November fifth twenty twenty four special election held for the purpose of amending the Alpine City Charter providing for the following findings of back repealer severability effective date and proper notice and meaning.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, discussion, City Secretary.
Um so this is the ordinance that uh we wrote based on the final results. We did get those final results and provisional votes on Friday evenings. So uh these should be the final results of the election. The job, any question?
And it's the one that's in your black folder.
Yes, that is correct. The one, the copy in the black folder is.
Okay, any discussion?
Just wanted to thank Mary Bell for sticking around. I'm guessing this would be agenda item. Yeah.
Discussion? Discussion?
Nice job, Geo putting all this together.
Thank you.
Very nice job. Yes, I I also want to thank the public for voting these in overwhelmingly. We've been working hard on these since February and they were typed up in the official language required by the state of Texas.
And it's October twenty three when you started.
October of twenty three. I know, I think I started typing in February. And it took forever because it has to be in that official state. So we appreciate all the voters. All right, let's vote.
Hi.
Bye.
Bye. City Secretary, the fi- uh first and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash eleven dash o two passed unanimously, all city council members voting in favor.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to action item E, City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and Councilman, this is to approve the Deckard Technologies Rental Scape software for the management of short-term rentals, compliance notices and online tax funding.
I need a motion.
Make the motion to approve it.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Discussion, City Manager.
So I know that we've had conversations back and forth with regards to our short-term rentals and how many do we have? And the amount of time that we have, four or five different departments actually investing and trying to keep track of this. I know that the county had looked at it a software and then they did not move forward with it. Well, they moved forward with it and then they canceled the contract. I had the pleasure of visiting with multiple um software companies at the T A M L Annual Conference to kind of pick their brains, understand expenses. And Deckard Technologies did a wonderful job demonstrating all of the capabilities of their software. And some of the things that I enjoyed was, this doesn't just apply to short-term rentals, by the way, because our hotel occupancy tax is the same. We can also use that to allow for our hoteliers to pay online as well. Um this is an annual fee of roughly sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Um but the package and what they offer is a lot of what we're wasting. I don't want to say wasting, I shouldn't say that. A lot of departments valuable time being contributing to something that we could offset with another company um and streamline it for those in our community. A lot of our short-term rental and our hoteliers may not live in Alpine. This gives them the ease and access of being able to do it once at clock, be in two o'clock in the morning. Um I understand that the cost is something that we've talked about and it's an expense that we've gone back and forth with, especially when we're looking at updating the S T R or what we're charging for permit fees. I wanted to provide a historical background on the fees itself. In twenty twenty one, when we implemented this, we collected five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in short-term rental fees for the permit. Please understand that if the short-term rental was in compliance with the city, they weren't charged that permit fee. In twenty two, we collected seven thousand five hundred. In twenty three, we collected ten thousand fifty dollars. And in twenty four, we collected ten thousand seven hundred. And as of the report date, we collected two hundred. I was also made aware that an online reservation um software that we utilize with our tourism department has decided to not renew that contract, providing an additional six thousand dollars that we have budgeted every year for about ten years. So this is another um source of money that we would not be having to add to our budget. It's already within our budget. Looking at what we've historically brought in specifically for short-term rentals and take it into consideration that we understand that we have several who are not reporting, that we are still trying to take the time to find. And having the company who could come in and the way they do it is they do basically daily searches. They have a an algorithm in place that really grabs all this information. They estimate that we currently have about eighty. Um and we're not getting eighty paid towards us. So they would actually initiate the, hey, you're not compliant. Here's your letter. This is how you can become compliant. This is how you can pay online. It also has ability for them to do all their registration online. It also has it where that as they're walking through that registration packet, that if they miss a field, they can't go to the next page. One of the things that we deal a lot with within all of our offices is, well, the signature is missing. This, you know, square is missing. They didn't put a zone there in there. They didn't, you know, who's their property manager, who's, you know, where they're living, what's the emergency contact? This would prevent them from moving forward with the permit um without having all the information, which also reduces the amount of time our staff goes through and then make sure everything is in the packet to provide to council. And based on what we brought in in twenty four and the availability of the extra six thousand, we can cover the cost of what this package, the software would uh cost the city. I think it's a a great choice to start, something to look at to help not only building services, it would also help the city office of the City Secretary. It would also help the finance department as well as the office of the City Manager who gets to coordinate with all of them. Um but it would also help the hoteliers in short-term rental. And the biggest thing we've asked is can we pay online? And this would give them that mechanism to be able to make their monthly payments online.
Hey, Councilmember Nick. Councilmember Nancy?
Couple of questions. The, so we're sure that this will integrate and I'm guessing it's just ACH payments or something, it will integrate in and make your life easier, the online payments with our current financial software?
So nothing integrates really with our current um financial software. Um that's really not been an issue. Um them actually making their payments online, one ensures that they're timely and we're not having to follow up. Um working with Deckard, we would kind of be able to see, okay, what reports are being provided. Currently, all of our court payments are paid, not all of them, I apologize. A lot of our court payments can pay online. We print out a report, we update the software. Um it really is no huge significant change within the finance. But it helps us on the back end with, okay, who's paid, who hasn't paid. Um hey, I'm gonna pay, but I can't, you don't do online. Correct. And then the availability of when they submit their payment, um having the report attached. One of the improvements and changes within the hotel occupancy tax ordinance itself is the requirement that they have to file that report. Um it is notorious for people to give us money when we have no idea why. Um they make the tax payment, a short-term rental payment. We don't know which one it is. We're having to track it down. This would kind of help with some of that.
And that reporting right now, does that go through Geo and his team?
It's kind of split between them. And so um the admin receptionist upfront will take the payment um and do a hand receipt. But then we have to actually record it within our accounting software. The finance department um primarily need right now is the one who goes through on a an annual basis saying, hey, you haven't paid.
Next question I had, sorry, was um just I saw that Stripe is the uh person that processes those payments. And do we have clarification if that is a fee on their end or convenience fee or how that would be processed?
So I have not followed up with that. Um I'm gonna say most likely there will be a convenience fee. Um that's the direction all um credit card processors are going.
So it won't be taken out of any of our H O T?
We do not pay it currently any convenience fees, nor do we receive any funds from them. So I know that there's always a, I get this convenience fee with the utility bills, just so everyone understands. The city actually does not see any of that money. It's so that we can provide that service.
Um then you said from twenty twenty all the way through twenty twenty five, we've gone from about six thousand dollars in permit application fees to ten thousand seven hundred. And in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, what were our permit fees for S T Rs? And when have they gone up from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four?
So they haven't gone up. In twenty twenty, twenty one, not everyone was required to pay the permit fee. So if they were compliant, in other words, they had paid their their hot taxes, we issued the permit without the fee. It was like a grace period. It was allow them to to have that benefit. Um that's where you see that slow increase into the twenty one, twenty two year. Um that's when we got the renewal started. Um and then that's when we started having a lot of the department's research, okay, who actually owes money.
So in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, they would have all had to pay the one hundred dollar renewal fee, but they wouldn't have to pay the one the third year? No?
No, so there was no renewal fee in twenty twenty one. Um and for a good portion of them, there was no fee initially.
Gotcha. But it's ramped up because of compliance, basically. When they onboard, they pay three fifty on year one and a hundred for the renewals. But everyone is required to pay a hundred dollar renewal now.
Yes.
Okay. That was all my questions.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Right, we need it. Uh I think it's a good start. So if we were to agree to take them on, uh is there like, are we able to break a contract or?
You can always break a contract.
The penalty.
And so the, I mean, obviously, we wanted to give them a year, um test them out. And the portal is completely designed to how we want it designed. We have a lot of input and control. And they're willing to work with us, making sure all of our boxes are checked, especially when it comes to registration. Um it it, out of all of the ones that we've looked at, um this one, I really enjoyed. The one part that we're not going with is that public side, um which could be added down the road. The public side allows you to go in and then pick a property and they will say non-compliant. Um but right now, we want to get our, we want to get off the ground and and see if this will have a positive impact, not only for our S T Rs, but for our hoteliers as well, allowing them more ease of access for payments, but also to reduce the workload within, like I say, multiple departments.
I think it's a good idea. Councilmember Stone?
It looks great. I'm I'm glad you found what what looks like a pretty darn good price for what they're offering. Is there anything that they're not doing that we will still have to do with Geo or some other staff members' time that you know of in the process?
So ideally, it still has to get before council. Um so there will still be the getting it on the agenda and the routine side. Um but the way that this uh product is designed, I mean, literally, I could go in, do my application, submit it. It goes to the department it needs to go to. Uh and then we would do the normal agenda process.
Yeah, and then uh we are doing a one-year contract. Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Um and about how many, remind me again, it's eighty something S T Rs we have in town?
So the number does fluctuate.
Yeah.
Um which is one of the reasons why I enjoyed this one is that they're out there every day. I know the discussion's been for that one hotel or that one S T R that is at one night a month and never gets caught.
Sure.
Um currently, we have seventy two that are.
Seventy two.
I guess you could say somewhat in compliance, but they're not all paying the hot taxes. Um when this report or when we had this discussion, they looked at about eighty um on that day.
Okay, so and and I'll note that we had at least one constituent that I know of, or perhaps someone that's from out of town, I'm not sure, that reached out that did not want this to pass, but they were referring more to a increase in the application rate from a hundred to three fifty. Um that is not in this particular uh uh piece at the moment.
No, so the permit fees are actually set by ordinance.
Yeah.
This is just to collect what has already been set.
True.
And then to be able to go through and those who are non-compliant, they will actually send them a formal letter saying, we know that you're operating as a short-term rental.
Gotcha.
Um you get to register, you need to, and then they know they're by us.
And they say, I I don't know if it's a guarantee, but just looked at their website, it says like ninety-five percent compliance is what they're shooting for. Uh if we have seventy two right now, have they told you about how many they think that's out there? You might have just said that too.
So we've heard eighty, um but I know one presentation that was provided to Geo and Councilor Stone, they were saying a hundred and twenty five.
So eighty additional or a hundred and twenty five additional?
So it would be eight to fifty.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And it really is dependent on the collection of the data. So we do have operators that will operate maybe prime example, Art Walk this weekend.
Yeah.
I got a guest house. I'm gonna go ahead and Airbnb it for three days. No one in this room would have caught it.
Yeah.
Um because we're not maybe focused on that for this week.
Sure.
They're focusing on this every day.
Yep, 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 yep. And to be honest, you know, either way, that's a business. I mean, if you got some friends that want to buy you dinner for that, you know, that's something, but otherwise, it's a business, right? Uh the one thing that I'll say that uh I'll I'll make it germane as best as I can until we move away, but that I'd like to see this uh be covered hopefully in the future by those those uh those permits that we have.
So that actually is why I broke it down.
Yeah.
Um minus the six thousand coming from another already pre-arranged contract that we have canceled. Um ideally, if we maintain a certain number of short-term rentals, which I believe the number was sixty-six or seventy-something. Um I can't remember my math in the head right now. Um.
Sixteen thousand divided by.
The permit would pay for.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Stevens?
Uh so it looks to be, given the increased number of additional forty-five, it'll be at least revenue neutral. So that's one thing. The second thing uh is a question. Can we not use hotel occupancy tax funds to pay for this?
We are.
We are?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, I was worried about, so this is truly revenue neutral and a big help to our hoteliers.
Yes.
So.
Great, but this is not coming out of any other fund. Currently, the short-term rental permit fees are within the hot fund.
Let's vote, all right, let's go.
Right.
Bye.
All right.
City Secretary, we've approved Deckard Technologies Rental Scape software for the management of short-term rentals unanimously. Moving on to action item F, City Manager.
As required, um I am I am required to present the director position to council for final approval before hiring. The city of Alpine for the past several years has been on and off of trying to hire a director of finance. In this last open request uh or search, we did receive one application from Victoria Sanchez. I did have the pleasure of interviewing her on multiple occasions. Um she does have over thirty years' experience in school district financing, um which can correlate back to government financing. There will be some little bit of a learning curve, but I'm pretty sure she'll do an excellent job. Oh, should I look? Oh, I'm supposed to read it. I was excited to hire her. I apologize. Have proved the recommendation of the City Manager to hire Victoria Sanchez as the Director of Finance as per city charter, section four point oh two A for the city of Alpine.
Motion. Second.
Second. Okay, continue.
I apologize, I was excited.
That's okay, and I was excited too. Catch it, I'm just letting you go.
Um so in having the conversation with her and her years of experience, um I do think she'll be a valuable asset to add to the city of Alpine. She unfortunately could not make it here today to be part of the discussion. She had a pre-arranged doctor's appointment that I told her not to cancel, you know. Um we are looking at bringing her on board on January sixth. The reason for the delay in hiring her is, one, we have to relocate the current team within City Hall to provide her an actual space to work. Um currently, there is no desk for her. Uh so we'll be working on that. And of course, with the holiday season coming up and in the back and forth, it will take some time. I have spoken with her about that hire date and she was perfectly fine with it. Um she's just as excited as I am. Um I just need council's blessing to approve the the letter, the job.
I wanted to point out that her resume looks great. And having been in school finance, that is pretty close to, I mean, there may be some differences, but human resources, payroll, employee benefits, retirement. Um she has a strong knowledge of financial techniques, rules and regulations. And not only that, but she's managed grants as well. And as council is looking to have more and more grants and look for more and more grants, I think that's great that we have a, we'll have a finance director who can do that. Um anyway, I think that her resume looks outstanding. Thirty-six years is what she has mentioned here, that she has done these various things for the school districts.
All right, Councilmember Escobedo.
She has an excellent resume. I'm very impressed with that. With her education and with her certifications, that's really important.
Councilmember Nancy?
Um just to kind of echo what you said, I think it's also important she had uh experience with tax formulas and the taxing entities that we have to deal with that private people, they don't deal with. Uh private accountants don't deal with the taxing entities. And then also the Texas, she has experience with Texas State Comptroller in various roles. So those things are really nice. One thing I didn't see on here, um it, does she have experience with bonds? Um, it, does she have experience with bonds? Being with schools, I know she was in Mar- Martha and Marathon, but I don't know if they've gone through a bond.
So, um, in conversation, that was one of the questions, the energy questions. She does have some experience. Um, she's not significantly heavy in it, but we would not actually go out for a bond without a financial advisor. And so ideally, she would just need to be able to manage the bond, which she has done.
Perfect, and the last question I had is a Megan question. Um, the, can you, uh, just briefly go over where? The offboarding of, we're currently paying a CPA firm to reconcile and do some other, uh, support for you. Um, what's the offboarding, uh, strategy for that? If there is an offboarding strategy? And how much have we spent in over the last, I'd say, months or six months, year?
Off the top of my head, we've spent a little over probably thirty thousand altogether, maybe a little bit more. The first month was the highest month because they, it was a learning curve on our software. We've already started offboarding because the agreement with council was up to seventy thousand or at the end of the fiscal year. Um, so I have already taken back on the reconciliations and have been doing those myself. Um, and they had one of the other task items, we had a huge task out on this for them, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, to be, to be realistic, it was. It was large. Um, was to help with the discrepancy we have between. The, the funds between the utilities, software and the, the finance software, where we're not matching. Um, I know that she, Lori, who is our representative, had been working with Carmen on that. Um, I don't know if we've moved forward again.
Okay.
So, but we've already slowed down.
Councilmember Stevens.
She looks to meet all the requirements and she's local. Those are my two requirements. Getting someone to move here and stay here is really tough, so. Nice meeting.
Councilmember Stone.
Good job, yeah, thank you.
Let's vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
City Secretary, council unanimously approved the recommendation of the city manager to hire Victoria Sanchez as the director of finance. Moving on to action item G, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I approve the hybrid compensation plan for city employees as outlined in Evergreen presentation on November fifth, twenty twenty-fourth. With an effective date of November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Any a motion? Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, City Manager.
So included in the packet is the actual final presentation. Um, of course, this is available and open to the public as well. As discussed on November fifth, the idea is to move forward with the hybrid model that looks at the market value of the current positions. As well as the current tenure of the employees in those types of positions. This is step one. The moving forward will be to adopt the actual job descriptions, which will be presented to council. Currently, those are being reviewed, um. And then explain to directors that it's an overview, not a task list. So they're working on that. Which will also outline the salary field, which is what we talked about on the fifth, the one oh one, one oh two, one oh three. Um, we do have access to them for a whole year after this study. To be able to ask additional questions, to get additional job descriptions, if we need help with how do we properly promote. Ide- ideally, the, the pay ladder is about. Um, moving them up either vertically or horizontally. Um, so really excited, um. Kelly will be here tomorrow. Um, I'm hoping council does approve it. Um, I did take the initiative to ask her to be here. To have a formal conversation with the employees tomorrow morning, if a council agrees it tonight. As well as they have prepared individual letters for all of the employees that outlines what their current base salary is. And what their new base salary will be.
That's right. Councilmember Nance.
It says, uh, affected November twenty-fourth. Is that, when is their next paycheck?
So our next, our, we are currently in the middle of a payroll. They get paid this Friday. Um. My game's right, yes. And no, time sheets are due this Friday. The new pay period starts that Sunday, November twenty-fourth.
But would that mean that this would go, their next paycheck would be larger?
No, so their paycheck on November twenty-ninth would reflect the same, and then their first paycheck in December. Would actually include the pay increase plus their long delay.
Okay, so first one in December. Um. Okay, and is this, when we look at this, is this about, coming back over it, about half the employees will end up getting. Uh, raises in this, increases or?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and it seems like it, what I really enjoyed is it's gonna, you know, feature its weird step. Uh, you know this, so there's, it makes it very simple. How long have you been there? And this is what they're getting paid, so there's not a lot of beta argument in how it works. Uh, it seems like that's kind of the same thing here, where you, there's gonna be fifteen grades. Uh, levels, I guess. And then if they moved, uh, not up-down, but horizontally, there's windows of like, maybe the salary is thirty-six to forty-two. And so as, as this provides you some flexibility when moving employees.
Yes.
What does, uh, how does this look in, say, from this year through year three, as far as interacting with COLAs?
So that, so the way that our current employee handbook, COLAs are dependent on council approval. So if the council wants to make a COLA raise, you also have to take into consideration that this could offset our pay scales. So the idea is not necessarily to get away from COLA, and I mean, the pandemic was a prime example of how COLAs are important. Uh, but for the directors and the employees to grow. For the directors to hold their employees responsible, to move them up through the system. And for employees to, to take pride in, hey, I wanna learn, I wanna move up.
So this will, so their pay will be less driven by year-over-year inflation or COLA and more driven by performance appraisals?
That is my hope, yes.
Okay, and so COLAs have to go through, have to be approved by, uh, council?
Yes, so when we have the budget discussion, do you hear me say that, you know, we're looking at an across-the-board COLA? Um, in my tenure as city manager, I've made it very clear that the COLA can't be divided amongst employees. Each employee gets the full COLA. Um, and I've done the same thing with merit. So if we budget five percent merit for every employee. Um, Bob can't give Mary three percent and Steve seven percent. There, there's nothing to divide. This is why every employee has that. The equality, that fairness. This is designed to allow for that as well. The growth of, you're doing a great job. You've met your growth plan, which we implemented two years ago, that outlines what your responsibilities are to move up. Um, and then we would calculate that within the budget. Council can always add a COLA. You just have to understand that the COLA should be applied across the.
And if this is just a difference in language such as COLA, then say. Um, I think it is important that employees, you know, don't get hit with ten percent inflation in a year with no pay raise. That's really gonna hit them hard. Um, is there a increase, say, from a year twelve employee to a thirteen employee? Is that a, basically, uh? A COLA, without being called a COLA, just like your tenure?
So, um, you'll notice, um, I'm actually not in the study, um, cause I have a negotiated contract. So, there's nothing in here about me. But you'll notice that employees do have tops, and that's where we would have to come back. So if you have an employee who I believe is at one fourteen. And they hit that threshold, it's coming back to council to decide, how do we want to move forward? And, and to have that, that individual conversation. It's not designed to cap ultimately, but it's also not to stay in place for the next twenty years or the next ten years. Um, we do have to make sure moving forward that we do, just like the charter, maybe every five years, we come back and. And do a self-evaluation of, is this working and is this realistic? Because we may have a huge influx from, you know, something that's happened, i.e. the pandemic, that, that was a huge impact. I do wanna thank council, um, prior, future, all of them. The city of Alpine is one of the only entities that has continued to give high-level raises. Whereas other entities were doing one percent, two percent, zero. I know the county one year did not do anything. In my tenure, we have constantly given five and above. So we, we've tried to move that direction. This just creates the ground zero to put the structure in place with. Now you have the eligibility to grow, and it's not all coming back on council. Council's saying, here's your opportunity. And the employee can grab it and run with it and move right up that chain, or they can say, no, I'm gonna wait for the COLA.
Okay, and then the last thing I was gonna say is, same thing we see with the school district. A lot of this, it seems very similar to school district, when you've worked with school district for thirty-five and topped out. And as a teacher, you're not gonna get paid anymore because that's your window. You're the max of your earning potential right there. Um, last thing I was gonna say was, the, does this solve the problems that it was intentionally, that it was, uh, intended to do? You were talking about compression and kind of creating a more fair pay structure for your employees that will, that they'll feel happy with at the end. Even though, uh, what did I say? A good compromise is one where nobody walks away happy. Um, maybe that's what this is.
So this is definitely a good compromise. I, I do foresee a lot of unhappy employees. Um, because we do have employees who are at the top of their positions and, and they haven't shown that growth. Um, I do believe that thi- this is a good compromise, and as I've discussed with multiple directors, this is ground zero. This is giving us that base, one, to increase our starting salary to the fifteen that we've discussed. Two, to give them the opportunity to understand, it's not dependent on. I, I hate to say it this way, but I like you, I don't like you. It's like, no, my growth plan, I succeeded, I can move up. Um, it also alleviates some of that battle or discussion with council with, what percentages do we include? If we have a clear line of growth with our employees, when it comes to budgeting, I know that. John Smith is gonna end up getting a raise because we're gonna promote him, I can include it. Because we've got it outlined that way. Will it be rough the first couple of years? Yes. Will employees be upset? Yes. But I think if, if we look at the long term, this is gonna be that balance that's gonna push everyone into the direction where they grow and. And if, if they choose not to grow, I mean, they stay where they're at. But once again, council will make the decision on COLAs. The plan is gonna make the decision on the growth of the employee salaries.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens.
Uh, so I just have four comments, and there are more comments than there are questions. Uh, one is, having been in this business a long time with lots of employees, both on the government side. In the open market side, uh, and not the profits. Having market data that we can point employees to, in my opinion, is very, very important. Because employees, having been an employer, we all can make decisions. We go with our feet. And so when people truly understand where they follow relative to the market data, they can make decide, decision about what they wanna do. They can stay and increase their skills and move up the ladder, or they can choose to go somewhere else, but I think that's an important part. And while you may get some rumbling, I think, uh, having Evergreen here, sometimes it's this week, next week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I think it's a really smart move. Uh, because you will hear some rumbling and, but I, but I do think when people understand and say, okay. Now, like, I've got some, uh, some decisions made. Getting the minimum pay fifteen dollars an hour, I think are critically important. Um, and, uh, I, I think the, the next thing for us, Megan, is. Uh, since, uh, you've got the consultant coming here tomorrow. It'd be good to put this on the agenda for the December, uh, third city council meeting. So you can give us an updated up, how to go and what are you hearing? Uh, and we know if you don't show up, then you didn't go out, no. It's usually ripe discussions to have, and my experience has always been. People get upset when they don't know. When you share with them the facts and data, they may be disappointed, but they're gonna find out, okay, here's how I'm valued in the marketplace. Now I can make some decisions, so won't let them regret it.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Um, I think, uh, Council Nance and Council Stevens, um, pretty much what I was gonna ask.
Okay. Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Try not to be too redundant here. Couple of statements, uh, maybe a question. Uh, celebration, vision, and, uh, working with the system. So celebrate, fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, that's fantastic, really good news. Vision, I love that you're already saying, you know, five, ten years, we need to be looking, this might not be the system, or it needs growth, or wherever that needs to be. Uh, I'm ready to go for eighteen an hour, I'm ready to go for twenty-two. Uh, but that's just because I, you know, I'm always looking out for the, the, the bottom employee. I'm always looking for, for trying to, to create, uh. Uh, the opportunity for someone to come into the city and be able to live on those wages. Um, I don't think we're, we're gonna create it, but we know that some of the biggest corporations in the world are the biggest food stamp recipients. Uh, and we don't wanna be one of those places. Um, with that as well, saying, um, and I know that I've said this before, but I'm just putting it on the record one more time. Say if we can't hire street, street employee department employees at one oh one minimum salary. We're gonna be able to work within our system and push that towards midpoint if, if that's where it needs to be, or something like that.
I, I do wanna add, and thank you for all of y'all's comments, if you wanna, um, add that this is the base pay. There is an area that we really don't consider, and that's the certification and the differential pay that is also provided for specific. Parts or departments. I really want council to understand that that is also on my list of goals, is to update the employee handbook. I've had the legal side updated. Now this is the, what we call the internal side, the procedural side. Which will include a review of the certifications. Once again, they may start at fifteen, but their certifications may get them to twenty-two.
Sure.
Um, right now, the heaviest department with certification pays is our law enforcement. Um, because they have to have them. I, I mean, we want them to be well-educated, informed and trained. Especially with dealing with the, the residents and tourists. But there's also other areas that were eliminated in twenty twenty that I'd like to put back in. So that everyone in every department has an opportunity. Um, I will say this now, I think the gas department, we have two certified welders. I would never want to weld on a live gas line. Um, but they do not get any incentive pay with it. So these are also things that I want the council to understand as it comes down the pipeline. Um, these are additional processes, additional pay, um, and growth for our employees.
And, and one last point here, does this allow, uh, the council to create new positions? And I'll just note that I'm speaking to what, uh, the city secretary had brought up at the last meeting.
So I, I had spoken with the city secretary prior to that meeting a couple of months back. Um, this is step one. All of the departments have been asked to look at their organization within the department, um, in particular, a growth plan. Um, not necessarily hiring every position that is in that plan. Um, I know at one point, the city had a hundred and thirty-six positions. We've never had that many employees.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as job descriptions and positions, that would be done annually through the budget, so that the council was fully aware. This is the organization, this is the direction we're going, this is. Because with those positions, obviously, there're gonna be different pay grades, and so we wanna make sure that we're fully budgeted for this. This was the step one, this was the groundwork.
Okay, and so that's still on a docket potentially, yeah.
So the final draft actually includes the, um, position of the city deputy superintendent.
Very good.
Great, thank you. I also wanna mention that this has been a little while coming, and it's great. Uh, back in twenty-two with Stokes and Johnson and Sandate, we were trying to move forward with getting the. Minimum fifteen dollars an hour. I'm glad that we've taken it to actually. An organization who did the research, who figured out how to make it fair for everyone. So I applaud you for that and for council for approving that. So this has been a while in the works, since twenty-two.
The one last thing I was gonna say is like the, the economic development manager. That's, I think, is kind of what Reagan's talking about. When you have a new position that's created, you, you guys are making sure to put them within a. Wage ladder or salary ladder, so that it's, okay, perfect. And then the last thing is, no one's getting a pay cut. And I think it's important for the public to know that this is an increase in two hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, if I'm correct, right, that's going to employees. I think that is good to know.
Yeah, there are no pay cuts.
Good. That's great. All right, let's vote.
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Hi.
City Secretary, city council unanimously approved the hybrid compensation plan for city employees outlined. In the Evergreen presentation on November fifth. Okay, moving on to executive reports, six minutes on the clock, please, City Secretary. First up, City Mayor, I just wanted to mention again the amendments. That was a major. Step forward for the council to get this done. It was a major accomplishment. It had been a while. Two thousand and five, so finally the charter is updated. And the amendments passed overwhelmingly. And I wanna thank all the residents and the citizens for that, and then council as well for your hard work. As we strive to make sure that we have a city charter that is, first of all, legal. And second of all, that is good for the citizens and for the growth of Alpine, so thank you. All right, City Manager, six minutes on the clock.
I have a rather long birthday and I will work through this as possible.
Let me also mention real quick, before you start her six minutes, since items are not listed out as per Toma, there can be no discussion or questions. Okay, all right.
And these are my regular updates. She is correct, I did not list them. Um, with the water department. I'm currently working with master meter and premier waterworks on a propagation study for smart meters, which will determine the feasibility and possible location within the city of Alpine. We've requested a quote for fifty smart meters to sample various meter sizes and locations. And I am gonna ask that all city council members participate in that program. Engineers are continued to assist with the lead-in copper requirements and the deadlines. We did meet the deadline and noticed. Notices were mailed to all residents within the required timeframe. Please note that there has been some outcry that there's wetting in the water, there is not let in the water.
It is a standard template that was issued by TCQ to utilize for those letters, is what we mailed out. The engineers have also assisted with updating the city's water conservation drought and contingency plan. That is currently scheduled for discussion item on December third with city council. The reason for this is that ours is currently outdated, and any possible future funding with Texas Water Development Board, we have to be up to date. For the wastewater infrastructure, the contractor and fabricator were in Alpine on November twelfth and thirteenth. They were able to drain clarifier one and take the necessary measurements to move forward with fabricating the equipment. And evaluate the condition of the concrete. The team is gonna continue to keep the clarifier empty as allowable. So as long as the plant doesn't have a major disrupt, the clarify will remain empty, which means we're operating off of one. Uh, for an update on the billing software, um, the last demo was scheduled for this Thursday. Currently, the team has demoed fourteen different software providers. Um, with the various team members. We're working to narrow down the, their top preferences. Since the team is the one who's gonna handle the day-to-day operations, I am, I'm, it's very valuable that they have the same. That they provide that input. I could have come to council and say, hey, we're moving with this one. Everyone knew I was a huge fan of one brand or one type, and. I've moved away from that, but I'm not gonna deal with the day-to-day they are. So I asked the team to, to do the actual research and do the demos, so that they can actually look at the software and get a feel for it, to see if it's something that we can utilize. They currently do have a top one that they really love, that even includes a citizen portal included with the soft pa- software, no additional fee. So that one was just really good to see. Um. Depending on the preliminary quotes that we do receive, we may have to go out for proposals, but we're trying to eliminate that by looking at all of our research or. Available resources for procurement. So if they have a buy board contractor, if they have a, a source well that we're members of. On the street infrastructure, the city, um, public works team is finalizing their current paving season. They had one block to go. Um, earlier this month, the council was provided the twenty twenty-five paving season list. I have been, I have received the road material requests, so the RFP will go out, um, later this month. Um, and we are repur- working on procuring the loader. Um, this one is a new one that I really wanted council to be aware, because this does impact some of the decisions if these legislative laws pass. November twelfth was the first rounded bills to be filed. The total bills filed was one thousand four hundred and seventy-one. This does include the House Bill ten thirty-nine, which is repealing section three fifty-one point one oh three five. Which requires the city of Alpine to expend the over fifty percent. Um, Representative Morales got that presented and filed. Uh, current bills to watch, and this is kind of what I hinted at earlier. House Bill three twenty-five addresses the total expenditures and sets limits through published rates set by a board. We may not be able to increase our expenses total, so that seventeen million may never change. Or it may change slightly. If this bill passes, it will require a board to set based on population growth or inflation. Or go out for voter approval. So this one is something to follow. There's a similar bill, House Bill seven seventy-four, that limits the annual revenue. On the same kind of concept that it be can set by consumer price index, population growth rate or inflate, inflation rate. So once again, that may change our abilities. Um, my favorite that I hope, hopefully will get passed this year is House Bill seven ninety, raising the competitive build bidding threshold from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. Last year they tried for a hundred, this year they're going for two hundred, hopefully it will pass. Will definitely help with procurement. Um, one to take notice, House Bill three sixty-nine is looking at regulating zoning. Regulates the construction of more than one dwelling on certain residential laws. So this one is something that will need to be followed. House Bill ten eighty is also allowing for alternative media notice other than newspaper if specific requirements are met. TML is providing weekly updates, and I have, um, signed up for their legislative webinars. In addition, um, upcoming workshops that council and the public should be aware of is the zoning ordinance on December third, twenty twenty-four. Council priority for January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the funding opportunities presentation from government capital, um, January twenty-first.
Hey, great, thank you. Alright, so moving on to council member comments, Councilmember Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, congratulations to you, Mayor. I know it's been a lot of hard work on the, uh, the, uh, charter amendments.
Thank you.
Awesome job in getting those through. Um, congratulations to this council, and of course, like you noted, other council members that have been here before on fifteen dollars an hour, fantastic accomplishment. Um, I'll note in all of your emails, you have a train email from Gio, uh, if. Uh, there's a hundred and seventy-five million on the line that Techstat is looking to, uh, push for. Uh, bridges and underpasses, God knows, we need at least one, one fixed, if not more. Uh, I'm not sure if that particular one, since it's not a working train, would be. Uh, yet it is literally a Techstat train, uh, owned, owned by the state. It's the only one in the state, to my knowledge, that, that is, that. Train line that's owned by the state, even though it's not working. Uh, so hopefully it would have some thought around that. Um, I also will note, um, that, uh, unfortunately, I will be, um. Out of town at the next council meeting and actually at a work event during this time period, so. I'm gonna try to, to jump on as best as I can, but I apologize, and I hope you'll excuse that absence. And, uh, as, as always, if any constituent issues, you can always reach out to me, email, phones, all that, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nance.
Only thing I was gonna mention is, uh, to give council a heads up. I've added to next, the next agenda, a short-term rental discussion to go over permit fees, parking, and possibly moving the fees over to schedule a few, or something like that. So just to give y'all a heads up.
Thank you. Councilmember Escobedo.
Um, I think. Everybody did a great job. I mean, of course, the city charter was a big one, which I didn't take too much part in, but you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan for explaining everything to us.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens.
Nothing else there, thank you.
Okay, great. Alright, so let's see, we're gonna move into executive session, so that brings us to item number fourteen, executive session. Pursuant to chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time. Is deemed necessary during this meeting for any posted item or to receive advice from attorney as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one. Consultation with attorney and five five one point oh seven four Personnel Matters. May I get a motion? To recess into executive.
So moved.
I need a second.
No second.
Discussion. Let's vote.
Aye.
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 City Secretary Council has voted to move into executive session at seven forty-six P.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Hey, will you tell, do we want Bill to stick around?
I don't think so, yeah. We, I think we have worked through.
Right.
At some point, we're gonna want him, but we have, we gotta have our discussion.
Yeah.
I need a second.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Hi.
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 Okay, City Secretary voted to reconvene into open session and 8:27 PM.
I'll try it again.
Oh.
Oh my God.
Did you hear us?
Cynthia, can you hear us?
I sure can.
Super good.
Okay, we're good. All right, so action after executive session. Do I have any motions?
Mayor, I propose the first motion that city council give the city manager the action to continue gathering data in preparations for a potential offer and negotiations of the Bill Ivy property.
Okay, I need a second.
One second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, let's vote for the authority to give the city manager the ability to continue to gather information and data in preparation for potential offer and negotiations of the Bill Ivy property.
Hi.
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 Okay, City Secretary, all council members voted in favor of giving the city manager the authority to gather data in preparation for potential offers and negotiations of the Bill Ivy property.
Mayor, I propose also that the city council delay any discussion regarding act of the executive session 14A until a future meeting.
Okay, and let's vote on delaying the personnel matters.
Mayor, you need a second.
Second.
Second. Let's vote.
Hi.
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 Okay, so we are going to delay that to a future meeting. All right, and with that, we are journeying at 8:48 PM.
Just letting under the line.
Wow, I know.
We're getting better at this.
Hope to run into y'all around town, but Merry Christmas if I don't see y'all.
Why?
I try to jump on towards the end of the meeting.
Merry Christmas.
Austin.